I'll call it to order. First item in the business is to approve our minutes for last meeting June 24th.
So moved.
Okay. Any second.
One second.
One second.
This rules. Any discussion?
They seem very detailed. There was a lot of feedback from the audience that meeting and it seems, I haven't read it word for word, but a quick glancing and reviewing, it seems to have captured most of the feeling that was there, which was...
What I will say is, I'm not sure of Phil's last name. I couldn't quite read it on the sign-in sheet.
It's Benenson.
Benon?
Yeah, B-E-N-N-I-S.
N-S-O-N. Benenson.
I-N-S-O-N. Okay, so that needs to be changed.
Yeah, there needs to be another N inserted before the S.
Yeah, there's a couple of different spellings of it.
It's part of the reason why I left the meeting.
Oh.
I wrote that for you.
So any questions we may have, we should direct to you?
His and Mr. Corden's.
My first.
Oh, cool. Okay. So that said, are there any other comments on the minutes? Nothing? Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes with an amendment of the spelling of Mr. Benenson's name?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Waiting for you to say.
Okay.
Six oh?
Six zero one. Six zero one, okay.
Five zero one.
Five zero one. Alright, I'm sorry. So, announcements.
We let anybody know.
Are there any announcements?
I don't have any announcements.
Carolina?
I would just like to publicly acknowledge Barb Sundag as the town manager for the work she's done over the last number of years as our town manager and first as an assistant town manager, then interim, and then coming on as town manager as she's leaving this month. And I just want to acknowledge her for all the work she's done, work that the public has seen, and a lot of work behind the scenes, one of which was really, I would say, cleaning up on an organizational level, cleaning up the town offices together with the planning commission, which, planning office, which did a lot also a number of years ago, and making this whole municipal center much more user-friendly for both public and staff. And just being here for our town through a number of major, major public crises and whatnot, and just handling all that. I just want to acknowledge her and send her best wishes on her way. We all don't interface with her on a day-to-day basis, but she supports the work that we do.
I will highly agree. Any other announcements? Public comment. We have one member of the public, the chairman of the public comment. He's annoyed at himself. Do you have anything you want to say, James? Now's the time.
No, thank you.
No comment? Okay. So, we'll launch into our annual organizational meeting. Number one, welcome new commission members. Doesn't feel that different because I'm used to sitting down the table from you on the DRB, but welcome David Cadren.
Thank you.
And we don't have any other new members, do we?
No.
Coming, I mean.
No.
David, how do you spell your last name?
C-A-D-R-E-N.
R what? U-N?
A-N.
A-N, thank you.
Maybe we should go around and introduce ourselves?
I was going to have him introduce himself first and then thought we could.
Alright, well, my name is David Cadren and I'm just re-upped on the DRB for the year and here I am and kind of first year in town government. I'm also town meeting representative. And hopefully doing that again next year, too.
It was nice to have you here, David.
Thank you. Excited.
Yeah.
Just go around and give David a quick idea. Well, I'll start. You already know me, but I'm James Whitey. I've been the chair for eight months and we've gotten some things done so far, but have more to do. Mark?
Mark Eaton here. First time on this board and I'm really starting to see what we're doing here and it's, it's good. It's a lot of work, but it's good.
I'm Liz McLaughlin.
Hey.
I'm a planner by profession and I'm a member of this board for two years and I'm vice chair.
Who?
Or, oh, maybe.
Maybe.
I'm Timbria Young. I guess on the DRB for a year and a half and then I joined the planning commission. This is my second year, my first year?
Second. Did you fill Timbria's seat on the DRB?
Were you an alternate?
I think he actually, I think he actually filled your seat when he left.
Did you leave in September or August or something, summer last night?
That's why, because I did, I started this right after I got off the DRB.
Okay. I've been on DRB since October.
So he made the other attorney woman?
Oh.
Gina?
Gina.
Maybe.
What?
Maybe he replaced Gina.
I think you're with Gina. Oh, wow, yeah. Well, maybe it's funny. Three years, maybe?
You just got reappointed, right?
I think so. I don't know. I, time is like hard to keep track of these days. Carolina, you want to?
I'm Carolina. We know each other from COOP and whatnot. I'm actually filling, I've been on the commission, I'm probably actually at this point the longest serving member of the current members of the board.
No question.
And officially completed one full term plus a little bit of somebody else's before that and I've been just re-elected to finish Gary Stroud's term until 216, 2016. And, yeah, it's a lot of work, but I actually love being on the, on the planning commission and being challenged by all the things and learning new things and it's great.
Okay, well, I suppose that...
How about Rod and Sue? Do they need to introduce themselves?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's good. I'm Rod Francis, I'm the planning director.
I'm Sue Fillion, I'm a planner and we'll get together soon.
Alrighty.
Okay, so, now we know each other. Election of officers, chair, vice chair, and clerk. Why do we elect a clerk? Statutory, statutory?
Statutory, statutory, we never, the clerk is supposed to do the minutes, but we don't do it that way anymore.
Yeah, I think the clerk used to have two responsibilities. One was to make sure the minutes got done and the other one was to circulate them and I think it's become somewhat redundant.
Do you think that that, in smaller towns where they don't actually have planning offices, that probably makes, where that kind of shows up?
Yeah.
It may have been more physically demanding if when you had to actually print it.
Is there, I mean, should we eliminate that?
We'll have a miniograph machine.
The fumes are always good. I don't think there's anything in statute that calls for it, Sue.
I don't know. I remember that, I think that the conservation commission was going to ditch the clerk and we got advised not to.
Right, and then we found something, not to.
Alright, we'll leave it.
I think we just elect somebody.
I think it's just an artifact that's better left alone.
Don't rock the boat.
Was there a clerk appointed last year?
Yeah, me.
Yeah.
Liz, the year before.
Okay.
I didn't do anything.
And I would never want to insult you guys by taking away the valuable clerkship title.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, some PCV.
Well, anyway, so you usually go up from clerk, vice chair, chair, or down, chair, vice chair?
Down.
Okay, so let's do chair first.
I'd like to renominate James Valente for the chair of planning commission for another year.
A second.
You don't have to second nominations, but I do appreciate it.
You're supposed to ask, are there any more nominees?
Any other nominations?
I, I as public nominate James two. Not me, James, you, James. I mean, James two nominates James one.
Despite the lack of standing, I figure, right. So if there are no, if there are no other nominations, I'll close them. Okay, well then, we should vote. Any discussion first? Okay?
Do you have a platform you want to run on?
I'll keep coming to the meetings and we will write law expediently and try to avoid conflicts with the public, the select board, and each other, and the staff.
So you've done a great job of that.
Well, I didn't do a great job of it in the last 50 days or so.
Alright.
Well, I must say, that last meeting was difficult and you did an excellent job.
Yes, totally.
I was very, very proud of having you as our chair.
I have a lot of experience making up for my mistakes.
We all make mistakes, but, that aside, I did Liz's comment there.
That was difficult and you did a great job.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So let's have a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So that carries five, six, nothing. Vice chair?
What's the vote?
I think it was six, nothing.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I hope so. I don't want to pad my stats here. So then, then we have vice chair. And is someone prepared to nominate Liz? Because if they don't, I will.
I'll re-nominate Liz for vice chair for another year.
Okay. Any other nominations? So I'll close the nominations. Liz, do you want to give a little stump speech as well?
I like being on the planning board and I'd be happy to serve as vice chair.
Okay.
She does a great job covering for you when you're late or not here.
Yes, that's true.
She knows how to step in smoothly.
She also has expertise, which I lack, so...
But you balance each other greatly.
That's right. Yin yang, frickin' frac. So, hearing no further nominations, are there, can we have the votes in Liz's favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, unanimous victory. Bush and Cheney. And then we have our clerk. Does anybody want to nominate somebody or perhaps themselves for clerk?
I'll be again if needed.
Okay, well, I'll nominate Carolina for clerk. Are there any other nominations? Okay, hearing none, let's have all the votes in favor.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so, a landslide victory for all the major party candidates.
Wow.
Yeah, it's like one of those old African elections, 99%.
Lyndon Johnson.
Except we actually won.
We'll wait for somebody to overcome.
Select board request to compile public comment on Wind Stanley Solar Project 90 Technology Drive for Public Service Board prefiled testimony.
Okay, yeah, I know.
Stat?
The one, okay, let me take, try and take this. The one thing you should be aware, aware of is, it's always a mouthful, the public service board. So what I have here is a copy of the draft letter that would go with a series of exhibits, in fact, eight exhibits. So I'm going to hand them in both directions here.
We sent our letter.
This is different than all the stuff we got, right?
We had signed off on a...
The thing we signed off is rejected.
Yeah, we signed off on a waiver, but the select board did not and nor did the Wyndham Regional Commission, so it was moved.
That rendered, that rendered our effort expedition, that's not the right verb.
Expedition?
Our effort at expediting the process was overwhelmed by the cooler heads of Wyndham Regional Select Board. So what you have before you is a very simple letter and the step in the process that we're dealing with now is simply to gather together the public comment that the select board has received and some of that public comment includes the considered response of the Conservation Commission and the Agricultural Advisory Committee.
And just, why is it our job to do this and why not the select board compile their own comments?
Both the select board and the planning commission has standing for the public service board, but it was a decision of the select board at the end of the item at the last select board meeting that the planning commission collect the comments, the public comments, and then forward them to the applicant. To be clear, so, and...
Just because?
I think it's probably because Rod and I were before them discussing it.
We're familiar with the process and we had been the recipient of most of the commentary to that point, so it was no huge extra burden. So, this is not to be, although the item in the agenda, it's called it prefiled testimony, I think it's probably better to talk about this as providing, providing comment on the project to the applicant or the petitioner, in this case, that's Wind Stanley Enterprises. So, it's a very simple cover letter that simply lays out two things. One was the process that the town employed to collect public comment and the other one is just to orient the reader of the letter to the exhibits, which number eight in total. And that encompasses the minutes from the, an outtake of the draft minutes from the last select board meeting and then all written comments that have been received either by the town manager's office or our office on the proposed project up until the end of business today. We need to send this to Wind Stanley Enterprises no later than the 12th, which is this Friday. And then they have an opportunity in their prefiled testimony to the public service board to take into account the comments that, that were provided to them by us. So, the way to piece this together in terms of your packet is that the letter goes with much of the material that's in your packet. The packet doesn't include, I think, either the draft minutes from the select board meeting or Ted Montgomery's email I had those here if people want to look at.
Those are the two that we don't have.
Yeah.
Tads is in here.
I have tads.
You have tads?
Yeah, tads.
Alright, so it's just, so I think the only thing you're missing is just the minutes from the actual select board meeting, which were succinct and just named each person that spoke and gave a less than one sentence description of their con, of the contents of their dialogue.
You know, I was just looking at Michael Bosworth's comments.
Yeah.
And I can't quite understand them because if you look at a solar farm as a good thing, he's essentially saying you can have too much of a good thing because then you, nobody else can have it. Like, these people would be capturing all the capacity of the substation with their solar array, which seemed kind of counterintuitive to me.
There's two things I want to say and the first thing I probably want to do is, in a typical bureaucratic way, is to quell the conversation. Michael's point about the ability of the grid to accept distributed energy onto it is a highly technical realm that mixes in to some extent with some market considerations and I would say two things about that. The first thing is, is beyond the purview of any municipal entity to render an informed view on that. And it is outside the consideration of the public, the public service board is not obligated to consider anything we have to say about that. It's a technical and market question and they have their own experts to resolve those issues and it's...
Never mind.
Right. And the second one is, I'm not entirely sure that Michael's concerns are based in some technical understanding of the way the grid is structured or organized. And so, then the third thing is, in terms of the market, the market mechanism being used by speed, it is literally a first come, first served. So, the bottom line is, you can be a winner or you can be, you can be the first of the losers. It's really that straightforward. And so, if you're the first of the losers, you're still a loser and...
Race to the top.
That's the end of it. So, and the public service board is clear about that, as are the utilities, and so, I don't have anything much else to add to that.
Thank you.
So that's not, basically, that's not a big issue then?
It, it's not an, it's not an issue in this sense that's really important. It's none of our business. So, the technical aspects and the market aspects are both things that are strictly the purview of the public service board and so, it is not much we can offer.
Yeah.
That's, that's valid in that sense. And they're obligated under their own processes to make both technically sound and market sound decisions.
So that would come from them?
Yeah, but it's not, it's not part of, it's not part of our deliberations.
Yeah, okay.
And our job is only to transmit these to?
At this point, yes.
The applicant.
We're not even really deliberating, are we?
No.
What are we doing here?
You're making sure that you're comfortable with the text of the letter and if that's the case, you're going to offer to sign it and then we're going to send it forward to the...
With all this...
With all the exhibits.
And then, there were some very interesting concerns aside from Michael's others and how do we ensure that the concerns that the public and different people have raised, most of it's in support, but with, it sounds like with some conditions or things to consider and how does that, how does that work?
The town, the town can comment at this point and what we've done is we've collected the public comment and conveyed that to the applicant. The applicant is under some obligation measured by the public service board to respond to those comments and I'd say the overwhelming balance of comments were positive and where there were issues identified, including the aesthetic impact of the visual presence of the project, there were two clearly articulated opposing views. So some members of the public have expressed a concern about the visual impact and some members have actually described the same visual impact in affirmative, positive terms. So, that leaves the applicant with the decision to respond to the comments and they can do that by balancing the comments, you know, the for and against, if you like, against each other.
Yeah, but like, somebody made a suggestion like to extend the berm a little bit further, kind of like...
That's a technical decision that the applicant needs to respond to or can respond to and make and then the public service board can follow progress of the applicant's response to public comment when the applicant does what they call deliver prefiled testimony. And so, what's going on here is that we're involved in an informal process at the very beginning of the application. The applicant, otherwise known as the petitioner in public service board language, is going to have to show some recognition that they've sought this public comment and that they've responded to it on some level. They'll do that in their prefiled testimony. Then there'll be an opportunity for the town to review the proceedings at that point fairly early on. And the town has the opportunity to take up its intervenor status at that point if it, if it believes that there's been, you know, some issue with the applicant not taking into account adequately the comments that we provided.
So will we be kept abreast at that time?
Yeah.
So it seems like, because it looks like...
Right.
We're that body that...
Right.
Well, I think ultimately it would be the select board who would decide if they're going to intervene or not.
We don't know.
Or what, I mean, at this point, the direction was to kind of compile the comments.
I think, I think the same...
I mean, we didn't kind of come to consensus.
No, and Wind Stanley in the past has been very amenable to comments and meeting things from the town that the town wants, so I can't, I don't particularly foresee any problem there, but one never knows.
Right. So I think, I think that they've not completed their own work yet.
Yeah.
Establishing the visual impact of the proposed project and the question of whether extending the berm or modifying the berm in any way is going to, A, provide the visual buffer that people think, or B, not impact the electrical, you know, the electricity generation of the project is something that they're still working on from a technical standpoint and that'll be contained in the prefiled testimony.
And also the agricultural issues like, you know, allowing sheep, you know, the issues about allowing sheep or plant, having the solar arrays be far enough apart so that there could be interplanting, like a lot of, I guess, Tad mentioned in Europe, but I know even in this country, there's people who farm around wind and solar and whatnot and I would love to support that and see that they do that.
So again, it's a question for the applicant to respond to those things in their prefiled testimony and it's then a matter of the public service board determining that the applicant or the petitioner has taken into account enough of those things for them to receive a certificate of public good. Our scope as an intervenor is narrower than just being able to collect any kind of comment. So our scope for actually making a sustained intervention in the process once prefiled testimony commences and the project is given a docket number is, we would have to reference our own town, town plan to be able to make a sustained, you know, claim in the proceedings. So, my understanding is, and it wasn't clearly articulated, but my understanding is, is that at this stage in the proceedings, on the basis of the public support that was expressed for the project, the public, the select board is not eagerly pursuing intervenor status. Town council is not being prepared to engage in that and neither is the Wyndham Regional Commission going to take up intervenor status, I think, at this point. But we are positioning ourselves so that that is possible.
So I, I read the letter and I think it's good. In the second from last paragraph, second to last sentence, the sentence is, "Some others raised the issue of possible, possible visual impact." It'd be my preference to add the word negative before visual.
Where are you again? Which paragraph?
Second to last sentence, second to last paragraph. The sentence is, "Some others raised the issue of possible, possible visual impact." I just want to stick a negative in there because I think that's a little truer to the comment.
Okay.
Otherwise, I think that this is a good letter. I noticed one of the members in public wants to speak. If, hold on, if somebody on the commission wants to add something, I'll get to you, but I want to let the commissioners.
I do have a question, is maybe two steps backward.
You never know.
Well, getting lost in all this, I'm kind of wondering what our role really is here besides seeing that it fits into the town plan and making sure we don't, you know, offer or endorse a project that doesn't suit the town plan.
I would say that our primary role is to refer to the town plan and ensure that a project of this scale is consistent or compatible with the town plan. And I think that, I think that we've done that.
Yeah.
I think...
You're kind of just doing a psychicality, alright?
Yeah, I mean, what I'd say in this instance is that the project, this project may, you know, once it's installed, you'll never know whether, you know, you're not going to know the reaction until the thing is up, but I would say for the most part, at this point, that the project is viewed favorably. But in a different community with a different town plan or a different project proposed for this community, it could present problems with reference to the town plan. So, in this instance, we're not, we're not confronted with a really difficult project or a difficult response, which, you know, is good. But we have gone through the process of confirming that it's consistent or compatible with the town plan and the select board has done, I think, its duty in attempting to publicize the project, which I think was done well in the newspaper and so forth, and to seek comment from the public.
Yeah.
And so, we've been guided by that.
I mean, I think that going through this process, we learned a lot because we are in this kind of informal period right now. I think that you could look at the planning commission as having a role in actually looking at the onsite development, much like the DRB does. So, in other models used in the, say, the planning commission would be doing site plan reviews, so if there was something that was so egregious and I realize it was a really general overview, you know, that is, we could make recommendations about that.
Yeah, it's just my concern that we're kind of spinning our wheels here.
It feels a little bit like spinning our wheels, but what I'd say in that instance, that which is, I think, I think that's partly to do with the nature of the project this time around and, you know, you wouldn't want to assume that it's always going to be like that.
Okay.
And you, in your letter, acknowledged the town plan. And you in your letter acknowledged the town plan, I mean, your initial letter, not this letter, the cover letter.
Right, which is why that's included as an exhibit.
Yeah, I mean, because in reading that it.
Yeah, I mean, the one thought I had about the letter is actually to include that information in the letter itself, but I felt like.
You did that kind of like a speed bump.
I think it's, I think it's good the way you did it.
Yep.
Any other input here before I get to James?
Um, I would like, in the very last paragraph, you asked, um, for them to consider what if any strategies can be employed to mitigate the visual impact. I would like there to be, um, a sentence offered there about asking them to consider, um, the agricultural component. Also that it be specifically named because there was.
What if we just change it to be mitigate visual and agricultural impact?
Sure.
Well, but the problem with that is you've got differing, the agricultural advisory committee did not see an impact to the agriculture.
Right, and.
Except the soils are deep, when it's decommissioned, it can be, so I think that.
Yeah.
That wouldn't be inaccurate.
There's a, there's a, there's a couple of problems here. Chronology, Ted was present at the, at the select board meeting but didn't speak. And so he offered this via email today.
Oh, Ted.
Yeah, and so that's okay, but what I'd say is, um.
But it's being sent along as.
It's been sent, I mean, I think, yeah, and so they can encounter it in those terms. Because if you read it alongside the summary of the agricultural advisory committee's meeting, they're. They, you, you know, I mean, I don't think Ted's critical of the project. In fact, I think about the opposite, I think he's.
I'm not critical of it either. That isn't that, but I just want to be sure that we're asking them to consider the visual to be aware, um, of that. And I would like to be sure that the agricultural component is something that they're going to consider also. The, the fact in terms of the spacing of the solar arrays and the allowing of sheep to graze or whatever, whatever other kinds of things wants to happen. I mean, that was, I forget what, I mean, I know the agricultural committee is in support, but did they make, what was, any other specifics that they have?
No.
No.
No, I don't think so.
No.
Well, I'll tell you what, I'm keeping track here and let's see what else we have and we'll just vote on these changes to the letter at the end of this. Does anybody else have anything they want to address in the letter?
Psychological impact of the sheep being among solar arrays.
Well, one of the letters does mention a possible traffic disaster. I mean, do we really want to get that specific in this letter?
I don't particularly, but if you want to compose it, we can vote on it. I mean.
I mean, it's simple.
I think simple is better.
Okay. Anybody else?
I wonder if it's.
Okay, James. Been waiting patiently.
I don't think we should be deliberating. I think we should just be compiling.
James Banes, Lubin District Two. We have available in our logistics system a town of valuable people of different levels of education. It's a rich resource of information. I see your, your, um, your, your involvement with the solar array is sometimes to hear the public gather the information and send it over to, um, the applicant. Is that the right term?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and nobody at this table knows more about how to do that than the representative David, because that's his job. So, um, we have doctors, Dr. Rebecca Jones, a dermatologist, she is awesome for Massachusetts Home Land Security. I mean, the emergency management, I wish we had her. And we have valuable people with, with intelligible information that can be passed on. So one of the things, if you feel like you're just spinning your wheels, is just take the public information, document it, and just pass it on to, um, the applicant and, and then see what happens. They will never always cover everything because each environment is different. They've never put an array in that spot. So if they say they got it covered because they have the experience, when you have a large array like that, you don't have the experience of that particular location. Now, number two, um, another responsibility that may fall into planning, and again, it falls in line of maybe you should send the information to like the applicant for Red Cross. What happens is, for example, a tornado hits the solar array. Is there, what's the debris going to do? What's inside of the photonic elements? Um, are we going to have to now approach Red Cross and say to them, well, you have one for hurricanes, you have one for wildfires, you have one for tornadoes, but I don't think we have one yet for if a tornado or, or the contamination, if, if somehow the structure or sign back activity may happen, including with severe saturation of the water. Because if we get freezing temperature without snow, we can get slight seismic area. So there's a lot of unanswered questions when you build an array this large. Now, say if you build an array that's half the size of the planet, you really think that none of the elements won't interfere with it? So I think your basic job may be just referral. And just make sure that the intelligible information from doctors, engineers, um, stupid people like me to, to pass it on and make sure it's passed on correctly.
Thank you. I think that's really.
And I'm very proud of you all. Most people sleep right about now when I'm talking.
I think that's what we're trying to do and I think this letter does it fairly effectively. We don't cover disaster stuff, but only because we didn't receive any comments from disaster people, otherwise we probably would.
Sometimes we add to give them. They don't know. Like when you have a wildfire, you have to seed it right afterwards because when the rains hit, then you've got a flood, but you only learn that the first time. I'm pretty sure Red Cross doesn't have anything on solar panels because I've done emergency management for Red Cross before.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you, James.
You're welcome, James. And thank you. You're a great chairperson. I voted for you and, 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 and I'm glad you're here.
Thanks.
And, and, and to the clerk as well.
Don't forget the vice chair, James.
Yeah, and the vice chair. Chair, vice para-cler, I'll be the jerk.
Okay. Two changes proposed thus far. The addition of the word negative on some others raised the issue of possible visual impact. I wanted to say possible negative visual impact. Um, let's vote on that first. I'll make, since it's my idea, I'll make a motion to add the word negative before visual impact on the second. Second to last sentence, second to last paragraph. Carolina, seconds, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that passes by unanimous vote. Now, um, some, Carolina, do you want to make a motion that's a little more specific?
Well, I guess I would just look for the, um. I, I, I mean, I don't want it to look like it's, it's against. I just want it to, um, have those comments by Tad be considered. I mean, I think he made most of them, I guess, but I think, um, it's, it's a known thing that people in many other places farm in between around wind and solar and allow different kind of agricultural uses. So I would just like them to, um, in, in their plans, can be considerate of, or be open to, I mean, however one would say.
Right.
And I, and I'm pretty sure that they would be. Again, like I say, they're reasonable folks, but just to bring that to their attention.
Well, can I, can I respond, James?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I was about to ask you what the repercussions of doing that.
I think the first thing that I want to say here is that the, um, it's good to see the enthusiasm and the, the kind of review of the project here tonight. What I would say is, is that, um, it's a quest, it's a question that we need to resolve as to whether the planning commission is appropriately deliberating on the project itself now or just doing its work as directed by the select board, which is gather the comments, submit the comments to the, uh, to the petitioner. So I feel like Ted's comments are included in the packet. They're one of the exhibits. The, um, the, you know, the, they're legitimate. It's a legitimate request to consider something else. I think that the petitioner will respond to that. There was considerable discussion on the question of agricultural, you know, the, if you like, the relationship between this project and agricultural soils and, uh, potential use of the site for agricultural subsequent to the project or, or to some extent even during. That actually did take place at the select board. So what I'd say is, my one concern here is that I don't think we should be developing new material or new comments to add in, partly because I think the opportunity to get that out was at the last select board meeting.
So the, the letter will be made an exhibit?
Yes, I'm not asking for that, but we did, you very, your, um. If your sentence read that the planning commission has compiled these comments and asked that you consider them as part of your project and kept it general, I would say, okay, but since you picked a thing, one thing to be specific about the visual impacts, what I'm asking for is to just add one more thing to be specific about, which is the agricultural comments that were made. That, that's really all. And not to say that I want us deciding on that. Where, where you're asking them to specifically consider the visual impacts. And all I'm just wanting to do is add the, since you pointed that out as one extra thing, I would just like to point out the, the agricultural thing. Again, it's not a negative, it's not, not in support of, but it's just.
Right.
Um, since you're highlighting one aspect, I'd like.
I'm actually doing something slightly more twisted than that. So what I'm doing is, is restating that there were people in the audience and there are people who submitted material seeking some mitigation of the negative visual impact of the project. On the other hand, which is the last part of that sentence, people said, I really like the look of solar panels, particularly eight thousand of them at a time.
Yeah.
And I think it's a really good spot for them. So that's the last part of that sentence. So what I'm asking the applicant to do is to weigh the testimony, if you like, or the public comment received at the select board and in these exhibits, where you've got instances of people saying, I think there is some negative visual impact from the project. And others saying.
I understand that.
But, so the sentence in itself is sort of balanced off, but I'm also giving the, the petitioner the task of resolving themselves how to balance off those two things.
Yeah, I, I get that, but I'm just saying, why isn't there a way that we can just ask them to consider some of these other factors?
Right.
That's all. It's simple. I mean, I want to keep it simple.
I mean, I think, I think the easiest thing to do is to add, add somewhat like James suggested, add in mitigate visual and agricultural impact. The funny, the funny thing is it's not agricultural impact. The whole thing from Ted is it's much more of a management question.
Yeah.
Ted, Ted is asking for an approach to the project that would probably ultimately result in a reduction of the number of panels and more open space around the panels and the use of sheep to control the grass and/or the addition of some kind of cropping. And that's not the basis for the project design at all. In fact, it appears to me as if it is entirely calculated on achieving just on two megawatts of electricity by installing eight thousand three hundred and sixteen salt panels, which leaves practically no space.
Well, I know, when I.
Around it.
Wrong, yes, I can see that because I.
Right, so, so that's how they get to two megawatts. Right, so to take Ted's comments seriously, that actually have to be, you know, reduce the amount of power they make, which reduces the amount of money they make, which reduces the payback period, which, you know, there's, for them, there's all these knock-on effects. And so that's also why we're getting into, I feel like we're getting into deliberating on the project by adding, you know, adding weight or giving extra consideration to Ted's remarks. And I think they're interesting remarks and I think the applicant should respond to them. But what I think it begins to get at, the design of the project itself.
Can I ask a question about, um, floodplains? Is this.
The long way from a floodplain, yeah.
Well, if, if somebody wanted to put one in a floodplain, is that not, how, how does that get regulated or is that just not legal?
It would, uh, there, there actually has been discussion about this recently because one was proposed in a floodplain in Bennington County and it was opposed and the Public Service Board, I think, upheld the, you know, did, did not issue a permit because it was in a floodplain.
Do we agree with that? I mean, is that something?
We do because you've, then once they start ripping off and clogging culverts and, um, under bridges, they constitute a hazard, yeah.
Yeah, that would.
Eight thousand pa, eight thousand panels in the Connecticut River is actually fairly startling image to, to deal with right there. I mean, it's not likely to happen from that site, but if you put it down somewhere close to the Connecticut River and know where to get swept into the river, it would be a substantial public health issue, is, is public hazard.
Isn't that, when they mount propane tanks, which is required, I mean, isn't that, yeah. I'm just wondering, because it seems like a land that is not, and it's, I mean, maybe it has something to do with spacing. It just seems like a land that is, for the, for the rare case that it would happen every hundred or five years, whatever. I mean, it's, it, it, could you, could you make use of the land? I mean, if they're just on some kind of a post and the panel was mounted above whatever that water level was. I mean, I, I'm just, I'm asking the question.
Yeah, it's a hypothetical question. Like I said, the, all I know about at this point is that it was proposed, a large-scale solar farm was proposed in the floodplain in Bennington County and I think the application was denied because the regional planning, Bennington Regional Planning Commission and the town, um, were concerned that they didn't want something that constituted a hazard in the floodplain and so it was denied. But that's all I know.
I mean, I think it's a, it's an interesting question. I mean, I know where I personally stand on it and it would be good the next time we redo the town plan. If any of you are sitting at the table still.
View on it?
To actually have it, yeah, to have, I think it's that kind of specificity that.
Probably because it's a site-by-site thing, because every site is really different and there'd be many different things to consider. So I don't think it's something you can generally say, except for that basically we don't support that kind. I mean, floodplains are, you can put different kinds of things in a floodplain, like recreational use, anything that's not permanent. I mean, I know you can put recreational use into a floodplain and.
Right. So if I could just bring people's attention back to that last sentence, for some reason or other, when you, I don't think you can just add mitigate visual and agricultural impact because.
No, I can't replace them, like you've been saying.
It's not, it's.
I thought Carolina decided maybe she didn't want to do it anymore.
Right, alright, okay, so we.
Yes, you do. I mean, tell them these boards.
Well, as long as they read his stuff and think about it, I mean, I can see.
They're obligated to because it's an exhibit.
There's no, I mean, if it goes in this way, there's no room for any of that. It's huge.
Right. There won't be a lot of grass to cut.
So you're good?
Yeah.
Okay, so i- if there's no other suggestions, I think we can vote on this.
Okay.
Uh, anybody want to make a motion to accept the proposed letter and closing public comments?
I move that we accept the proposed letter from the planning services department with all the attached documents to go to Wind Stanley.
A second.
Okay, uh, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Select board, public hearing, opposed zoning amendments.
So, um, one of the things that you got in your packet that we handed tonight is the language as had been forwarded to the select board. So the amendments that you made at, at this, at our public hearing. Um, the public hearing is going to be on July sixteenth, so it's next Tuesday. Um, the agenda hasn't been set, so we don't know where exactly it is on the agenda. So, um, there's a new chair of the select board. I don't know exactly how it will run.
No, I don't.
But in the past, the planning commission has made a presentation of the.
All right.
Proposed amendments.
Yep. I kind of imagine it being very different.
So this is what was, this is what was submitted to the select board?
Yeah.
Do we have to submit some other, something?
Are you going to present it? Do we have to be there? What's the bottom line?
Yeah.
James should go.
James should go.
Can you go?
Even though it's the day before your birthday, is that right?
It's probably more of a.
Make your birthday all the sweeter, more.
My birthday, I'll see what more fun after that.
I think at least one or two members of the planning commission would be warranted. I don't think it requires a full turnout. I mean, remember the origins of this is that we're, if you like, cleaning up something or fixing something that was initiated by them. And so I think, the way I feel about this is that this is sort of the end of the process to some extent. process to some extent, far as I'm for them.
I mean, we'd get a feel from Barrett, but-
This came to us from them in the first place, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So-
And it came to us from this constitution of the board minus one new member, or was the new member present?
Minus one of the current board.
We've got one person, right?
One person is new.
Okay. Well, I'll be there.
Okay.
I'll try not to mess it up.
Might be a way, so I can't.
Uh, you just stick to the script, it's a secret.
Yeah, I won't say anything inflammatory.
Okay.
Okay, so let's get back to something that is near and dear to me, which is the subdivision regulations.
So we're done on that one?
Yeah.
I hope so. Is there anything else?
I don't think there's anything else to talk about.
Let's talk about the subdivision regulations.
Right.
Those funny things.
All right, yeah, so, I'm going to walk you through what you have, and I apologize you didn't get them beforehand, but I, it was a holiday and I was a crowd and it wasn't necessarily in last week, to hurry up and finish it. We are getting close to having a full document, so you will definitely have that in August, James.
Good morning.
Article two, I made some changes. You had expected, you had asked for more text boxes and graphic things. So there's no change to the first page, other than I found this really cool lot line adjustment that I took from somewhere else. I should cite that.
Location?
And I put in a text box with, text box with the minor and major subdivision. And then if you flip over to page five, I did a flow chart of, and I might need to tweak a little bit, but of the typical development review process, so if you have a lot line adjustment, if you have a major subdivision, do you have a minor subdivision?
I think this is great. I don't know about the other former DRB refugees, but I'm not sure I ever even understood this completely until I looked at this chart.
So where it says the days in between, like for instance, on major subdivision, it says preliminary plan review, 45 days, DRB issues decision. Does that mean the DRB has 45 days or-
Yes.
To issue a decision?
Yeah. I could do 45 days max or something like that.
Right.
No, just I think needing to know where that, does the DRB-
Or I could do 45-
Needs to, needs to-
I could do within 45 days.
Give their decision within 45 days, yeah, that's-
There's a little, I don't know, my first grade teacher called it hungry monger, I don't know the name of the thing, but the less than thing?
Yeah.
What is the name of that term?
Less than and equal to. It's just, it's, I don't know.
Less than greater than?
Less than greater.
Hungry what?
Hungry monger, he eats the bigger number, because he's hungry.
It's very cute.
Yeah.
Okay.
You guys both went to the same school.
We were just, uh, less than-
Hey, that's the Browneboro Public School system, I remember for you.
I'm Browneboro.
Hey, you remember it, though.
Exactly.
You probably did that in second grade or something.
Less than or equal to.
Oh, I get it. So, a lot, basically, a lot line adjustment is a one, you know, just one step process, major subdivision, a little bit more, and a minor is-
Yeah, and so I might flip it around, as Rod pointed out, it's kind of not more of a complexity.
On, on kind of like a separate thing, that's maybe something we should bring up another time, or probably is something we should bring up another time. Are, are these days, these time limits, are these like mandated to us, or do we set these, or what?
They're contained, they're contained in statute.
Yeah.
So they have to be that amount, they can be less or more?
They can be less. We can't, we can't make it less. I mean, under statute, we're allowed 45 days. I suppose we could give less, but wouldn't want to.
I think, I think the way I would explain is informally, in practical terms, where generally significantly less. But where we have the statutory maxima, which is what these are, then we stand on the right to have up to 45 days to render a decision.
The applicant has that right, that, that we all have to act within that time?
Right. So we can't, we can't, we can't go to 46.
Well, yeah.
They can't push us short of, you know, they can't say, after 14, where is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all it means.
But in there, I mean, I, I guess, obviously, there's a difference between what is allowed and what we've actually practiced.
I think the actual-
A lot more-
I think the actual practice is a lot, is a lot more efficient than that. And, you know, the DRB now meets once a month, so it's typically, you know, a 30-day turnaround for something like this. You could be, you know, as an applicant, you could schedule something for, you know, two mu, two consecutive meetings and, and be fine. I would say, however, in my experience watching applicants do this stuff, that there's often more of a gap between their steps than the 45. And it's not because of us, it's that they take, they take longer to get their stuff together and do it. So they'll get a preliminary plan, and they might take a while, take a while to come back-
Yeah.
-after that. So, you know, there are a lot of moving parts and, for them as well to consider. So in balance, I would say, in this neck of the woods, 45 days is not regarded as a horribly long or difficult length of time to, you know, to deal with.
Okay, so what else we got, Sue?
Okay, so, you had also asked me, oh, I also added figure 2.2.
I like 2.2.
This is your appeal of Bruce. But there's no corresponding text, I gotta figure out if I'm okay with that or not. I kind of am.
I think it's great.
But it's hanging out.
I just want to point out the straight arrow.
Yes, the straight arrow. I did see that, I didn't think it was worth a-
I kind of like it. It's a bit like the Lynn Stanley map.
Yeah. So section 2.8 is the required submissions. This is different, I had kind of listed them numerically the last time, and I realized that A needs a little bit of, the language there needs to change, because it's actually indicating that I've got an X. So at one point, I had done a table with minor subdivision and major subdivision, but it was actually working out that you needed the same information for both.
Oh, maybe.
Yeah, you know.
This is all, oh, that's what that is?
Yeah.
Yeah, she gave me the whole package.
Yeah. So I was inclined to step back and say, okay, what do we need? And then just from there, depending on the subdivision, then you, you don't need to submit it, so, or the DRB could waive it. And you'll see when I get to the next, when we get to the next article, that we are actually requiring applicants to sit down with staff before they submit, so we can go over what kind of information is going to be necessary. And that's really critical, because we're moving away from that minimum lot size as the determinant for density. So we want to actually get with the applicants, inform them about the process and what sort of information they're going to need to supply the DRB with.
Because we're moving to that other, more conservation style assessment.
Yes, yeah.
What do we call that? I forgot.
Feature-based density.
Right.
No wonder I forgot. And I'll, I'll explain it to you, to you as we get through.
So what are you saying about this X business?
I have to rework that section, I just caught that note.
Okay, just haven't done that, okay.
Actually, I would just cross out that line, and X indicates the, our information. So this is the basic information that I felt didn't really matter what you were proposing, if it was a minor or a major. You need to provide this information. And from there, we can then begin getting rid of information that doesn't apply. For example, if you are not in a special flood hazard area, then basically you wouldn't give that information.
Yeah.
Would it be possible, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Would it be possible to, on some of the required information, have footnotes to indicate where, say, flood maps would be?
Sure.
You know, like a footnote, say, if you want to find a special flood hazard area, go to www dot whatever.
Probably a footnote at the bottom of the table, rather than at the bottom of the page.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes.
But it wouldn't be a footnote, it would be a-
Table note.
Table note.
I've learned this through the editing of the town plan.
Yeah, yeah, don't, don't, don't say footnote, you mean, and now.
Um-
Okay, yep.
And so I think in, in one of the previous versions, a minor subdivision, we weren't requiring that they provide environmental information, but that's really critical when we get to how we calculate density for the subdivision. So that does need to be provided, and that's one of those things that really is not, cannot be waived.
Could we get David the informational piece on what this is all about from like three meetings ago?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, we're gonna talk with David afterwards, so we can meet and-
Yeah, we're gonna, we're hammering out a time to meet and kind of-
Don't know what we're talking about, Sue.
Bring me up to speed.
You want to read the feature-based density thing?
That's it, yeah.
Ah, ah, ah.
Well, he might not, because it's tonight.
You know, because by the time we went through all those machinations and we got to the feature-based thing, it just made so much sense.
Is it basically just like subdivisions built around the land unless like-
Yes.
Based on the features of the land?
We actually have a subdivision coming, working its way through, that we just gave final approval for, that was heavily about like feature-based kind of mostly.
Basically, it takes numbers and abstract forms of evaluation out and moves to subjective, like what's on the land, what shouldn't you build on, how much room do you have to build, and then how many lots could be fit there reasonably, is the simplest way, I think.
And it throws out kind of the minimum lot size, so you need to have three, one, one housing unit for three acres. It calculates density kind of based on that, but not minimum lot size.
So I think the, the big insight is, and we should probably cap it here before we totally fried.
Yeah, because you'll see it more when it's like-
When you use, when you use minimum parcel size, then what you end up doing is coming up with what they call a theoretical yield for a, a larger parcel. So if I told you that you can have the minimum parcel size in your zoning district is three acres, and you've got 30 acres-
You're gonna fill it with as many three-acre lots as possible.
You want, you, all of a sudden, all of a sudden, you want 10.
That's true.
And then the reality of the landscape might be that between the various features of the landscape, there's no way you'll ever get 10. But you end up in that kind of bargaining process as regulators, starting with 10 as the magical number. Whereas what we are trying to do is get the applicant to engage in a process of reading the landscape and saying, you know, I think I can get five out of this 30 acres, once I've taken into account steep slope, water bodies, everything else. And that's when you can start having a conversation about, well, what size five, and where, and how do you want to do the actual development? And so, for the most part, the lesser developed regions of the town, the rural and rural residential areas, the landscape is much more challenging like that-
Yeah.
-than, than the, you know, big, the table, regular, you know, flat surface that you can just carve up into nice little squares. So that's basically the, the origin of the whole idea.
It also allows for, not incorrect, for clustered-
Yep, exactly.
Stuff, where you could, in, in a way, maybe end up with that 10, but it would be clustered and done in a different kind of way, so you wouldn't be using that minimum lot size, you'd be placing it-
It's more efficient, yeah.
Right, you'd get, you'd be get, you'd be getting a 10 units, but it wouldn't be, you know, spread across the 30 acres, it'd be clustered in a corner.
So in a way, it's beneficial to the developer to do it this way.
And especially areas where the topography is very different, where there's a lot of hills and streams and stuff like that.
Right, yep. That's, so that's, yeah, that's the beginning of the thought process here, I guess.
Yeah. No, that's okay. And what I like about this B on page eight is, is, this is the information that, I don't necessar, it's not required, but, you know, pretty much, if you have a major subdivision and you're putting in a road, you're going to have to give a stormwater management plan and erosion and sediment control plan. I mean, you've seen that at the DRB level with your major subdivisions.
No, you were clear, because it says maybe requested.
Yeah, yeah. So I like the way it lays it out, like you might have to do this, but, so obviously, if they're in talking with staff, we're going to say, oh, you're building a road, yeah, you're going to need this. So I think it's a, a more simplified way of presenting the information, which is my thought, just seeing it tonight.
I like it's kind of giving them a partner of like, you know, hey, don't be like blindsided if we ask you for a traffic analysis.
Yep. So that, those are the new things in article two that you haven't seen. Article three, okay. So I didn't give you the whole article, because it's really only the front couple of sections that have changed. So we went round and round on conservation subdivision. And then we had that great EPA workshop, and we wanted to look at, you know, we couldn't get any consensus on what the right minimum lot size was for the rural, for the rural residential areas. And so we started looking at alternative, alternatives to having minimum lot sizes, control the density. And we found the feature-based density, which I'll get to you, David. So the approach we're taking now is to get rid of a conservation section, subdivision section of the ordinance, or of the subdivision regulations, do away with minimum lot size in the rural and the rural residential, and go to this feature-based. And by getting rid of the minimum lot size, then we're also encouraging smaller lot sizes, so that the clustering can happen and more of a conservation approach can be taken. And also with the design standards that you'll see. So the process goes, basically, we want the applicant to come in and sit down with the department to go through, so that they can understand what the process is, what sort of information they're required to provide, and understand what the design standards are. Sometimes it happens now, it doesn't always, a lot of times, they just submit something and it goes to the DRB, and, you know, they can require something or, or waive it. We think these are the town's regulations, and it's perfectly reasonable to come before staff and have a conversation about the regulations and what our regs are saying. And then the DRB-
That's much better than waiting, not having the right things, coming before the DRB, and the DRB says, you're not complete.
Right.
Right.
Is it, is there a place where it says to have that meeting?
Yep, it's step one.
Step one.
Oh, step one, alright. I was thinking it was further down.
Pretty much at the beginning.
Thank you.
And so the next requirement of staff would be basically to determine the allowable density. So this is a predetermination that would go before the, you know, when they went for their hearing, the DRB would be saying, yeah, we agree, or, you know, it should be less, less density, or you're allowed to have more density on the site. So that would require staff kind of using our GIS information and figuring out what are the environmental conditions on the property, looking at what the buildable land left, or the developable land is, and saying, okay, we've gone through our two tables that you'll see on the next page, you can get four units, or four parcels, or whatever the number would be. And again, that would be verified by, step three would, they would, they could do more analysis on the site conditions. And then step four is, they would go, am I ahead of myself? Yeah, step three, they would put together their subdivision plan by identifying the building site areas, and then the utility and facility locations, and then the boundaries. So that's consistent with the conservation subdivision process that we had been looking at. And then they develop their plan using the other standards in the, in this section, and then they go before the DRB and kind of-
I have a question. You know, we identified the problem of having little, carving out little lots along the street frontage and leaving the big, empty-
Yep.
What's the remedy for that?
You'll see. Oh, I can't wait. I didn't put page numbers on it, but it's under section, the last page, section 3.4, district settlement patterns.
Oh.
And so this is one of the design standards, where we basically say, you have to avoid rural strip development by limiting the number of new lots that access in front on existing public streets to two lots.
And that wasn't even a setup, that was a dialogue.
Yeah, you didn't have it long enough to use that.
Beautiful.
Section B allows the DRB to waive- Section B allows the DRB to waive or modify any of the standards in Article Three if it's not creating more than two lots, or...
Are you back on them?
Uh, back on the front page. Or it determines that it clearly meets the intent of the regulations. So Section 3.2 and 3.3 are kind of the, they should probably include 3.4, so you wouldn't be able to waive those. And then C is just a catch-all, the DRB can require more information if needed. So how are we gonna determine maximum density? Well, we say if you're in any district besides the rural and rural residential, we're gonna send you to the zoning ordinance and you're gonna have to follow the minimum lot sizes there. So that's kind of the, the way we've been operating in Brattleboro. And then this goes on to say, within the rural and rural residential, we're gonna determine the maximum number of lots that you can have under the method laid out here. This is on the second page. Section 3.2. So first, we're gonna set a minimum lot size. And this is gonna be, what I suggest is 20,000 square feet, unless it's part of a PRD.
And what is it now?
Right now, the minimum lot size in rural, rural residential is 1.5 acres.
How does that come out in square feet?
And it's three. This is, 20,000 square feet is less than half an acre, but more than a third.
Yes, more than a third, yeah.
Okay.
In this country, an acre is 43,680...
Five sixty, 43,560.
43,560, 43,560 square feet.
Seems like, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Because we talked about it.
It's a really useful number.
So let me tell you a couple of things about this...
And a hectare is...
Oddly enough, it's...
2.2 acres.
It is 2.2 acres, which converts to, I think, 10,000 square meters. You see, there's something there, isn't there?
It's the Aussie heritage there.
You know, it's kind of handy.
In setting the, in, in coming up with 20,000, I guess the way that I can justify it is, I think in residential, the minimum lot size is 12,000 square feet. So these are the next layers up. So it's bigger than what we allow in residential, but it's way smaller than what we have now, so it can encourage...
It's 10,000.
10,000.
We just...
You're good, you just added a bunch.
We had a really grueling DRB meeting about those minimums.
Oh, yes. You're right, I'm thinking if you have more than one unit on it, it's 2,000 after that. So, so it's more, but you know, that's consistent with how we want, how we've laid it out in the town plan, but it's considerably less than what it is now. So then we need to talk about density. Again, right now, it's being controlled by the minimum lot size, but we're saying it's not gonna be controlled by minimum lot size anymore. And we're gonna use this calculation that's over in Table 3.1 to determine it. We need to choose kind of where we start. So we're suggesting one lot per every two acres, but we need, we need to see how some of these numbers play out. And it just so happens that we have a intern this summer working on GIS, so we're gonna sit together and kind of play through some of these scenarios, so for the next meeting, kind of show you what different lots would, you know, what their density would be.
Could I make a suggestion? Two suggestions. One is that you could combine the top two roads as just paved roads and maybe cut this down. But I think it might be simpler if the formula was buried somewhere and the other end of the table just said something like, one unit per two acres, one unit per two acres, one unit per four acres. Because to me, all this stuff is just confusing.
Okay.
And I think it'd be more confusing if you never dealt with it.
More likely for people to cry foul because they don't understand it.
Yeah, I mean, one unit per X acres, that, that, I get. Is there any reason that that's a stupid suggestion, to staff?
I'm a little confused that, about, weren't we just talking about not having, not doing minimums lot sizes and now we are again?
Well, you have to separate out, right now, we're using minimum lot sizes to control density. So when we say in the rural zoning district that you can have one unit per three acres, that's, that's how we're controlling density in, in the rural area? I'm not explaining that very well.
You get four units on a 12-acre lot, you don't get four lots of three acres, you get four units on a 12-acre lot in the appropriate place. You know what I mean?
It's, the, the, the two spaces are not necessarily treated in the same way. So the minimum parcel size means that if you had a 30-acre parcel, to get back to that example before...
Can I just suggest you use one of your most prolific tools?
Is this really a whiteboard model?
It is, it is.
I think it is, I mean, I just thought it was helpful to me when I first...
Okay.
So I would be distressed, too.
I know, I should have pulled my notes.
The spotlight is on you, Rod.
Oh, my God.
I kind of flubbed when I brought television.
So this is regular build, right? So how am I gonna, so this is, this is just 30 acres, right? And if the minimum parcel size is three acres, we're gonna have to divide this into 10, which in itself is very challenging. So anyway, so you end up with, and it really equals 30, right? Then what you've done, this is, this is, this is now. So you own the 30 acres, you come in and go, I want to subdivide, I want to subdivide down to the minimum parcel size. I want, I want 10 three-acre parcels here, because the minimum parcel size is equals three acres. We wanna scratch that concept of the minimum parcel size, we're going to deal with that, but we have to come up with a way of actually measuring density. And so this doesn't really, this, this approach solves density...
Through minimum lot size.
Is solved through minimum parcel size. And in the new setup, we wanna do something where density is, density is context, right? So in this case, you end up with this area and this area.
Wait, Rod, before you go too far in physical features of it?
Yep.
Let me stop you there.
Yeah.
Because that, that gets at the buildable area, which is another piece of it.
Right.
But the context is based on what kind of road access you have.
Right.
Do you have municipal water and sewer?
Yeah.
You know, are you in the public water supply area?
I was gonna get to that.
That's the context.
But in essence, if we had a major subdivision, say off of a state highway or paved class two, it's saying here that the maximum density would be one unit per two acres.
Right.
So in essence, so I guess you could go more in it, but...
There is some controlling factor, but in that situation, so say it's a 10-acre parcel and you'd get five lots in that situation, but they don't have to be five, two-acre lots.
So at maximum, you can do one per two acres, but at minimum, they have to be 20,000 square feet.
The minimum lot size, yeah.
Right.
Yes, yes.
I get it now.
So, yeah, okay, so what do they, so, so it's water and sewer, it's road access?
Type of road.
Yeah, it's watershed, whether it's in the public watershed.
Public watershed.
Or close to it, I shouldn't say. And other features, I mean, we can determine if there's other features, you know, whether it's near other conserved lands, we could...
Well, you have this two tiers, one is maximum density and the other is buildable area.
Right.
Right.
We would put more things, or more likely to have flexibility in the environmental elements of the buildable area. Is that how you set it up?
Well, the determination of the buildable area is kind of those...
Physical features.
The physical features. And so it's the ones that we think of that are rather environmentally fragile, like the steep slopes or the flood plains or that kind of thing. I think that the upper table is, is more of the locational type attributes.
I like that they're separated that way.
Yeah. So the idea here is first you'd go through and figure out, well, what is actually the density that you can have on your parcel? And then you're gonna look at the parcel level and you're gonna figure, so it could ultimately, you know, it just depends on what your piece of land is like, how many units you're gonna get out of it.
And then these environmental features don't penalize the property, like, they don't necessarily set the density.
No.
And I think that's good.
So just, let me make sure I understand this. You, so you've got your hypothetical 100-acre lot with 50 developable acres, developable. Assuming it's on a paved road with municipal water and wastewater, so you get your two units per acre.
Mm-hmm.
Would you be able to build, I'm sorry, one unit per two acres is what I mean to say? Would you be able to build 50 units?
No, 25.
25.
Okay.
Yes.
25 units.
On the 50 acres.
On the 50 acres.
Right.
And each lot could be, in that situation...
The 50 acres is the developable part, portion.
Yeah, and each lot in that situation could be 20,000 square feet minimum, so you would actually be clustering and...
Is this, if it's, is a planned residential development or not?
No.
No.
Because in a planned residential...
Well, it's a tool...
You could, you could do townhouses or something.
Yeah, that's a tool you could use to maximize the buildable area that you've established after you've looked at the context.
Yeah. So in reality, in that example, it's, it would be 25, well, 50 acres are developable, but only 25 of those can have housing on them?
Nope, you could get 25 units on the 50 acres. You, as the developer, could choose how you're gonna develop those. You could have minimum lot sizes that, you know, each lot could be 20,000 square feet or each lot could be two acres. That can be your decision.
But you get 25 units.
But you get 25 units.
Right, and it could be, or more to the point, David, it could be a combination of those things.
Right.
So that's where the, and that's where the flexibility comes in.
To the developer.
Yeah.
Based on parameters that we've set forward.
Now, using that same example, if you are on a paved road, but you have water and, if you have a well and septic, then you're looking at one unit per four acres, so 50 divided by four is 11, 12. You would get 12 units as opposed to 25, because you're on well and septic and...
You have to allow it.
In that situation, you know, they might take advantage of the two acres if each of them are gonna have their own onsite well and septic, because they're gonna need it.
And you can imagine a development pattern there where each parcel could be, you know, fairly long and narrow in profile. And so they could place the leach fields, they could each have individual leach fields, but they could be located some, you know, sort of some distance from the house and sort of be close to each other. You know, there, there's minimum distances between each leach field, but there's a way, so there's a way in which you can combine these elements that allows for flexibility for the development, as well as meeting the state requirements for septic and sewer. Some people, some people are, some people are kind of reluctant to engage in community systems because they don't have total control. So you have to figure out a way of allowing for individual systems and then stacking them as closely together as you can possibly manage without interfering with each other.
Do we really have to have this many distinctions on the wastewater?
Um, kind of. You're either on water and sewer, or you're not. Or you have one, but not the other.
Yeah.
I mean, they're, I mean, they're the...
I don't understand why the boundary at the public water supply watershed matters, frankly.
Um, well, we, in the public water supply shed area right now, it's a, we do allow residential development at a, at a density, or it's one unit per 25 acres. So we're really committed to preserving that land. So the idea is we don't want a whole bunch of development on the edge of it. I mean, it's, we really want to protect that area, so...
You had a map when we were working on the town plan that really showed that.
Yep, yep. And we have it, we have it as an overlay on a zoning map that shows, also, it's not a zoning overlay, but there's a, there's an area of management for the watershed.
I was gonna say, I wish we could just do a zoning overlay. It makes more sense to me. I know it's not easy, but...
But why, I guess...
Yeah.
This is a way to move away from overlays, actually, so it kind of is a little bit simpler in that regard. And I guess just because we've defined an area, which I think in this case is, well, no, it's not all town and land, because, but a big chunk of it's town and land, it all drains.
Right, the immediate area around...
I guess, why would you want to line development upright on the edge of it? I mean, there's uses, to me, I see it as a tapering, so if you're, if you, if you're on the edge of it, it's, it's a gradual taper. I mean, it's, it's up to you guys.
Is that, I mean, it's just hard for me to understand the combining of the two, where you go from your road access to the wastewater multipliers. And I've read note number two a few times, and I don't mean this at all as a criticism, if anything, it's a critical of me, but I just can't wrap my head around it.
So could you give us an example of, let's say there is a parcel that has state highway access?
Mm-hmm.
It utilizes municipal water, but doesn't have municipal wastewater, let's say, and borders a watershed. So what, in that example, what would be the allowable...
It would be, I think it's gonna be one unit per nine acres. Let me just make sure, so it's got...
Could you whiteboard that, whatever you're doing in your head, once you're sure you know it?
Well, no, I'd rather whiteboard it, because then I'll, I'll know if I'm doing it right.
You okay?
Yeah.
So the first part is, is, because I actually didn't do one of them, so...
Always use pen and paper, right? Or pencil and paper, excuse me.
Yeah, so it's on a state highway, so it's two times one equals two, 260.
Oh, can we check your work there?
You said it's on, it's on either one.
Yeah, either one.
So then it's two times 1.5, so that is 2.5, right?
Three.
Three.
Yeah, see?
No, that's right.
Yeah, no, so I was right the first time.
Yep.
And then it borders...
Is or isn't the public watershed? Yeah, it does border the public watershed.
So then it's...
Times three.
Three times three is equal to nine, so it's one unit per nine acres would be the density.
Two times three? Is it two times three or three times three?
Two times three.
At least it says two times three on the table.
Yeah. So it's the highest number is the...
No, it's, it's three, three times three.
Yeah.
Those are...
So the density adjustment is times three?
Yeah. So, because it's cumulative, so your first adjustment is for the road access, so you get two units. So then you're gonna take this, I guess I should have done this.
That's... That's, that's the point of note two, that it's, that it is cumulative.
So you take the product of your first road formula and then you multiply it by the next one whatever the wastewater system disposal system is, and then you multiply that product by a public water supply boundary.
So it's two different things here, rather than a whole list, it's really two, two different categories.
Yeah, I think maybe the public water supply watershed should be a C.
Yeah, I agree.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Because, because you, with all the other ones, you can't have two of the same.
That's right.
In the same B area, but with that one you can't.
I see what you mean, yeah.
That's what I was getting confused.
So it's another, it's another feature.
That's a separate feature, okay.
That makes it much more understandable. And then the point that you said, then when you say it's cumulative, then it works out.
Now, the other thing I had, had, was kind of turning over in my head is, well, these are all kind of potentially punitive in a way, so where can we give our incentives for clustering? Or incentives for using low-impact development stormwater management strategies? So is there a way that, you know, up in the front, we basically say the max, we're setting it as a density that cannot be greater than one per two acres, but do we maybe want to change that?
The next table is the incentive because you can have that same number of lots, you just can't build them.
Right, right.
Like, you're not being penalized for having, let's say, wetlands on your property because you can still build that same number of units if you can manage to avoid them, right? Is that what, is that what this says?
No, it's not, I wouldn't say that's what that's saying because you're actually, you're not getting credit to be able to build in that area.
So do these things then reduce the number of lots you can build?
Yeah, they do, potentially further, yeah.
What do you have for that list of things that we used to give credit back in the conservation subdivision days?
I have those.
Why did we get rid of them?
Because they went with the conservation subdivision.
Could we use them to give people a bonus here?
That's what I was, that's what I was thinking about.
Is there a reason not to?
Are they going to work the same way if we approach it this way?
I think it can work, I think it.
Maybe if we just vastly simplified the ones that we think are, would be most utilized here. I mean, I remember it was kind of like various and sundry left, right? I don't remember any of the things.
I mean, especially if we're trying to encourage cluster development, I think some sort of bonus, which would be the reduction of minimum lot size potentially.
Well, they're automatically, they have that by right. By right, they can have a different, you know, they can use the 20,000 square feet, they can go down to 20,000 square feet as the minimum lot size.
But what I'm saying is if
Which you mean is more units?
We could use less minimum lot size.
Less than the 20,000?
As an incentive.
Yeah.
Or as a bonus for following other parts. Just an idea, especially if we want to encourage cluster development because 20, 20,000 square feet for a cluster development is, is, I mean, it's a huge lot for a rural area, but it, but it's a decent sized lot when you're trying to encourage more communal areas. So that's just one, one idea.
Is there a way to somehow, and I don't know if it really fits with the way we're doing this, is there a way to have another item that specifically lists incentives? And, I mean, I think that's what you're, you're looking at in your head, is it?
Yeah, well, I was trying to figure out, can I do it on this 3.1 determining the maximum density? So first we could hit with the things that are going to detract and then you can start getting it back if you do these certain things.
Add another section. I don't know. And I, what I started to say earlier, but then speak. Just for me, this is harder to understand without the explanation, without the, the examples. And as you discuss it here and we do that, then I go, okay, this makes more sense. And if you're, excuse me, I'm meeting with the applicant, then you get to do that and you can whiteboard it or paper it and do that. But in general, when people are going to.
Read the regulations.
When we're just going to be having our, and I'm thinking a little bit ahead, when we're going to have our public hearings and all that, how is this, I mean, again, it's sort of like, I remember when we did the initial flood regs, it was so overwhelming to us and took so long for us to learn it. How does the general public?
Well, I'm, I mean, I'm clearly, I'm still stumbling.
I know, I know, so, I mean, just.
So like a big text box that has explanatory matter?
Well, I don't know, James is sort of hinting at it, I mean, I don't know, is there?
I couldn't agree with you more because what we're asking to do is make a change from a very old conservative system to a very progressive, what I think is a good system. But I think just the fundamental, the fundamental nature of proposing something like that is going to be difficult, I think. And if it's complex, I think. I, I like, I like the idea, but where this is right here, I think, is too hard to understand and will be too hard to explain. And I also have some question in my mind of whether the multiplication system is better than just saying, well, pick the least dense version. Because like if you had a private road going to, next to the public water supply watershed, all of a sudden, you've got one unit per 36 acres for a class four road, you've got one unit per 72 acres.
Except that it says that the maximum density would not exceed one per 20 acres. So you, it'd be a big change, but I hear what you're saying.
If we're on a class four road and we just say, okay, one per 12 acres, we're accomplishing something you think is appropriate, or, I don't mean to say you, but if one unit per six acres is appropriate on the public water supply watershed and one per 12 is appropriate on a class four road, why not just take the one per 12, you know what I mean?
The, so the, the least dense measure, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
So if you find yourself, you've got these two different tables, whatever is the lower value is the one that, is the one that's going to apply to you.
Yeah, I think that's easier and I think it takes away the ability of an opponent to ridicule this.
So you, you multiplied the top, like, with the class four and like the watershed, you said, it would be one unit per 12 acres times one unit per six acres, is that?
That's what we, that's the way it stands now.
And the thing is, is that class, if that's the way it is, class four is always going to be in violation of this.
Well, and you haven't even got, I mean, the fix now is to limit that to 20 acres.
Yeah, but you see, if the class four allows one unit per 12 acres and then you're multiplying that by whatever you are in the bottom one?
I mean, you'd need another multiplier too, so you'd go from 72 and you'd multiply that by either two, three, or four.
It's just class.
So here, you're saying is basically, like, when I look at the math and I look at the class four roads, I, to me, that's the most restrictive. I don't think we need homes down Halliday Brook Road, like, I just don't think that that's.
I don't disagree at all, I'm just saying, if one unit per six is okay by the public supply watershed and one unit per 12 is okay in the class four road, if you've got a class four road in the public watershed and you're going one by 12, you're still accomplishing both your ends, but it's simpler for an applicant to understand, okay.
And this is, this is where I think it's going to be good because the next step will be going in and looking at parcels and kind of showing you scenarios using the GIS system. But I hear, I hear what you're saying.
I also have a separate point too on, you had brought up possibly combining the top two of section A, the state highway, to include class two and class three.
If we continue to think that the density, I mean, the density is appropriate to be the same, it shouldn't be the same density.
My, one of my feelings is that there's quite a leap between a class three and a state road, which would, I guess is also a class one technically.
Class.
Not necessarily.
Yeah.
Somewhere.
Yeah.
Okay, it's just, whether it's town or state, I mean.
Yeah.
Okay, and, well, then, I think we also need to throw a class one in here as well then because if you're saying that there is a new street state in class one, then we need to throw a class one in there as well. Not my original point, but for instance, a subdivision off of Marlboro Road is going to be extremely different than a subdivision off of, say, Good No Road, which is a class three, or Bonneville. And I, I think we would be more inclined to allow them more freedom in how they, how the units are dispersed or added up or whatever.
And which one?
On a state highway than a, than on someplace, than on a class three.
It's gravel, isn't it, Bonneville, most of it?
That's what I, yeah.
I mean, you probably mean the paved parts, right?
Yeah, I mean, even, yeah.
Oh, I thought, I thought I printed out the one that showed the gravel roads and.
I only think they should be combined if we end up voting that they should be the same.
Yeah.
And this is probably too early to say that, I just, if we can cut something out.
So you want to try and find, if I can summarize what you're saying, James, you want to try and find the right number for the road multiplier and the, and the other feature multiplier? So that it's kind of a, the pattern is clear.
And it's not cumulative?
It's not cumulative.
Yeah, so that it's not cumulative, cumulat, cumulative. I'd like to minimize categories if we can.
Although adding category C would be helpful.
And then I think the C helps by breaking it up and making it more.
So one way.
If we're going to have to do some math, I just think the simpler we can make the math and the more obvious we can make it.
So let me, to be clear about your process, you're saying that the first thing that you would do is you would arrive at a density figure based on the, the location of the parcel with respect to the road network. And you would derive at a score, say you get one unit per four acres. Right? And then you'd move to the next category and you would add up, you would look, you would make those calculations and say they came out with the answer of one unit per three acres. And then you looked at C and it was the same as the one above, one unit for three acres. You're saying then the density would be set at one unit for three acres because that's the lowest score of the, the three different tables that you looked at?
I think, I think you said at first one was one per four.
Was it the lowest or the highest?
Highest.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
All right. All right.
Right.
Yep.
So you want to get rid of the cumulative?
Yes, I think you accomplish your goal by just picking the highest one.
And the way, and the way to make sure that that works out is to make sure that there's not some kind of funny math outcome by saying inadvertently that being in the public water supply area is less problematic than being on a class four road or something like that, right? Is that what you're getting at?
Yeah, I mean, basically, I think if we think one unit per six acres is the right number to be sparse enough not to damage a public watershed, then if, if, if we have to get it up to there because the person otherwise would not be there, then we should. But if there's another one that's higher than that and we've sort of reached our target sparseness.
To bring it down.
Yeah, I mean, I sort of look at this like, boy, if I wanted to attack this, I would say that this yields absurd results when you actually do the math. And the fix right now prevents that, but it just.
Okay.
I think we should condense and make it as simple as possible and as clear as possible. Because I mean, there are these people don't like to do math, I, I don't mind it, but this is tough for me, frankly.
Well, I mean, I'm not, I'm not wedded to having to have something with the public water supply because I do, within the public water supply watershed, we are really low density there, so.
I mean, I, I think the, I think the motivation is good. But like, what I would do is I'd kill the 1.51 on B and make that a footnote. I, and I'm not saying this is what you should do, this is just like my gut reaction, I'd combined paved roads, which are the same already. I'd make this a C.
Except David thinks that we should make a greater distinction.
And, and I, our committee should decide if we make that distinction, I'm just saying, this is the way I look at it now. If, if this, if this is what we want, that's what I would do and I'd make it section C. And at the bottom, I'd say, you look at your property, you see which categories it is for A, B, and C, and then pick the lowest maximum density that applies.
Lowest?
Lowest or highest?
Highest.
The least dense.
Least dense, least dense.
Which in and of itself is an interesting term to quantify right now.
I don't mean, I'm trying not to be confusing, but.
Yeah.
I'm following you, James.
And I'm not saying those are the exact things we should do and I have in mind David's criticism of, of the A setup right now, and I think it's well founded.
Yeah, I'm just saying, like, one of these, these, a subdivision off of, a developer should be able to do more with a subdivision off of, say, Marlboro Road than they would be able to do off of Bonneville simply because the infrastructure exists to.
I, I agree with you, I, I don't think you're wrong.
Yeah.
I'm just saying if we can find some type of highway that's similar.
Yeah.
We should try to condense.
And I think we also do need to address class one roads in this table, which aren't addressed.
It's fine by me. That sounds, is that something we should be talking about now, do you think? We may as well, or? Is this kind of a lot?
Nope, this is good information for me to go back and work with, actually, I don't think, trying to figure it out any.
I just have one other comment on my same comment I made earlier. Is this district settlement pattern A, is it strong enough?
Right, so she's on 3.4.
Because it just seems kind of, you know, having a pat, respecting the pattern is not really as strong as saying, you know, thou shalt not have too many houses fronting the roadway and so forth.
Well, I think B is clear because we're actually saying we're going to avoid rural strip development by limiting the number of new lots. I think that one is clear to me.
But how do you do that?
So when they bring their subdivision plan in, there better only be two lots that are accessing the main road, you're going to have to build a road.
Yeah.
I mean, it gets at the comment that we received at the EPA workshop is that people are just chopping it up along the street frontage and.
Because that's the cheapest, that's the cheapest way of doing it as the subdivider and it's the cheapest way of doing it as the person that develops, you know, including the homeowner. Right?
So you're limiting it to two.
Yeah.
And, you know, so if you're getting five lots out of it, well, you're going to have to bring some sort of access back there.
Right.
And configure them differently or do flat lots or something.
And that'll prevent that whole lollipop thing that you guys were concerned about.
I think the road standards are going to get at that.
Yeah.
But I don't have them all in front of me right now.
And the other thought I had was, do we need like a text box to say what the, what goals these various things address in terms of, like?
From the town plan? My concern with doing that is just that if the town plan changes, then these would have to be changed right away.
So would, but we would need something like that when we're presenting this to the select board to say that we're advancing X, Y, and Z goal. And I was just wondering whether we want to put it in the text itself.
It's an interesting idea, which is.
Yeah, I'm, I kinda see what you're both saying. I, I feel like putting it in would force us to then, a decade from now, and I know once every decade isn't very often, but it forces you to go back and rewrite the whole goal section every time the town plan is updated. But it is extremely helpful to have it for when it is presented to the select board. Whether in it, I, I would be hesitant to put it inside the document.
Yeah, I think that's...
So it'll just be an exercise for us when the time comes?
I think we should demonstrate how this furthers implementation of the town plan. That could be a separate document. I don't know, I don't know about...
In and of itself, the planning regulations are meant to...
Implement the town plan.
Implement the town plan.
Yeah, right.
So for, I guess it'd be a little redundant to put the goals of the town plan in it, in the planning code.
I just see it as a step that's gonna be necessary.
Yeah.
That we were asked to do.
I think an explanatory process and then the presentation would definitely...
Yeah, I could begin annotating it now.
Yeah, and so...
Depends, that's a good idea. I see B as a good example of this, not that. Somebody who's good at sketching. 'Cause I don't think I can snag that from somewhere else, but...
Um, yeah, I think more this, not that, would be something that we would work on in, um, subsequent iterations of this document along, I mean, that might be something that we do through the GIS kind of...
Yeah.
Analysis that we do, too.
Yeah.
Become able to demonstrate what, what is it, this, not that?
I don't know if SketchUp can do that, Google SketchUp maybe? Oh, did you say this one? I loved this one. It's not as good with, not in color, but the red is, is not this, and...
I have one more question about 3.1. Are we okay on this?
Yes, thank you.
With the private road, could we, eventually, if there's a subdivision, a private road is built, that road is evaluated based on the standards in a different section, right?
Yes, wait, sorry, can you repeat?
I mean, if you've got, say, a 20 unit subdivision, you need a nice road under a different section.
Yes.
Yeah. It's, it comes in different sections of subdivision regulations, and what we say now, and what we would continue to say, is that for a road to be taken up by the town, it would need to meet town specifications.
Actually, I think in this version of it, I actually say if you're building a private road, it needs to meet town specifications, it doesn't matter.
There you go. So, uh, might I suggest that we could take private road out of this and simply put a footnote and say that if you're on a private road, it just should conform to the density for whatever road the private road comes off?
The problem is, is that there are a lot of existing private roads in town that are not, um, adequate, and there are subdivisions that occur on it.
Yeah.
You seem to be aware of one or two, so, um...
Yeah.
I think that's the problem. I mean, I think going forward, as new private roads are built, this would be less of an issue, but if it's, maybe it's something like an existing private road?
I mean, a lot of times, the existing private roads, I mean, are updated to new standards, because the development is just so intensive. And even if it's not something that's required, we make it something required.
Yeah.
At the DRB level, I guess.
Okay.
There's another, there's another issue there, too, that's a bit varied, I reckon, James, and that is, and I don't, I don't think we encounter it very often in Brattleboro. But a long private road off a fairly miserable class three road, you know, leads to a pretty isolated subdivision or destination. And so you end up in this sort of jeopardy where emergency service vehicles and others are negotiating kind of a pretty extreme road hierarchy to access. And so there is, there, there should be, I feel there should be some consideration of the implications of that, even where the private road, you know, meets standards.
Okay, bad idea.
Yeah.
It does not waste time discussing it. Other things?
Um, this is just, um, just, just wasn't right. But like, under 3.3, um, it goes A, B, C, and then it goes to F. Is that just titles?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and the same thing happens in, um, Section 3.5 also.
Yeah, I was reorganizing.
You didn't, nothing's left out?
No, nothing's left out.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to be sure, but...
I think Sue just is...
What?
Exercising a new alphabet there.
Yes.
She doesn't like who has DNA.
It's funny, 'cause they're both in my maiden name. My middle name and my last name.
Is there anything else you want to call our attention to, Sue? I'm sorry. Oh, no, it just, it looks near like there's a D in it.
You must be out of order.
Hey, ma, there's no D in the alphabet anymore.
Um, no, I don't think there is anything else. I mean, the rest of it applies to locating the, the building envelopes, which we had talked about. And, you know, so it actually gets to the site level. So the stuff we went over is more of the, what are you, what are you gonna be able to get off of your land? And then, um, and what are the, the physical features that restrict the developable area? And then the next set of design standards are, okay, now you gotta show us where the building envelopes are gonna be, and here's the design guidelines for that.
What are you talking about?
I think Mark's actually right. I think you are missing a page.
She's missing a page. Well, then I put mine together wrong. Excuse me. I don't think so.
Hang on, yeah.
A, B, C, F, E.
These pages are so out of order now.
Yeah. I'll make sure the next... D, E... No, yeah, you're right, Mark.
The illustrious planning commission learns the alphabet.
I'm out of order, too. Next time, there will be page numbers on that.
You should pull the meeting to order.
I think maybe it's time for motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I hear proof, right?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Any second?
I'll say it.
Any discussion, anything someone wanted to say to that set? James?
We don't meet until August 12.
I think we should go like in an hour.
Okay, so I'm gonna close public comment.
Is this, is this your page that you need to spend?
No, that's okay. Hopefully for the next track.
So maybe what, all right, so I did have a missing page then?
Well, you're a missing page.
So all those in favor of...
'Cause they weren't missed.
All those in favor of adjourned?
Oh, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, objections? Okay. David, first meeting's over.